Let's open this May 6 meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission. Call it for order. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to address the commission this morning? Okay, then we'll move right into Agenda Item 2, Scenario Planning, Steve and Kent.
I'll just kick it off by saying
Of course.
By saying that there seemed to be some curiosity about what scenario planning is. And of course, there's also linkages with the Lane Livability Consortium work, which we heard a little bit about at our last meeting. And so there were a lot of questions about how this all fits together. And we probably won't be able to paint the perfect picture of that today, but we're going to start by just letting you know a little bit more about scenario planning
Good idea.
Where it's headed, so.
Thank you very much. Thanks for showing up, Kent.
You bet.
Steve, good to see you.
Same here. And just a couple of quick things, too. There are several of us, staff-wise here, who are connected in one way or another to scenario planning, so Carolyn and I, as well as Curtis, Stephanie, and your audience, as well as me, pipe in if we have some other comments on issues. I'm not sure everybody knows, Kent, I think some of you do, but maybe not all of you do. Kent was the Planning Director of Lane County for years and now is the Project Manager for the Scenario Planning Project. So I'm going to hand it over to Kent to walk us through kind of where we're at. We're at a very early stage in this process, so it's kind of a good time to kick off kind of where we're headed and some of the processes.
Perfect.
Thank you all for inviting me. And I'm glad that I do an update. It's not a polished update from the standpoint of PowerPoint and products to show you everything. We are really at the very beginning. We are just getting underway. We don't have a lot of handy products to show yet, so that's important. And I would offer as well, if you want an update in the future, as products start coming out, I'm more than glad to come back and share those with you.
I think that would be worthwhile, Kent.
So a lot of land use and transportation planning has been going on in this region over the last two or three years, Envision Eugene, Springfield's Refinement 2030 Plan, the Coburg Crossing, and all of the transportation system plans that are underway. In 2009, so here we're going back, 2009, the Legislature passed Organizing Jobs in Transportation, which directed the Central Lane Metropolitan Planning Organization, I'll shorten that to MPO here, and the rest of this, to develop two or more land use and transportation scenarios that accommodate growth while reducing greenhouse gas emissions from light vehicles. And those are defined as vehicles under 10,000 pounds. The five policy bodies that are located within the region of the MPO are required, under this legislation, to cooperatively select a preferred scenario. However, we're not required to implement it. Fortunately, the Legislature recognized that the Portland Metropolitan Planning Organization is not representative of the rest of the state. They're one governing body. Under the legislation, they do have to implement a preferred scenario. They wanted an MPO that would do a pilot effort that could help the other non-Portland MPOs in the state. And with all the planning we had going on here, it was decided that the Central Lane would fit the bill. The leaders of this region were fortunate to capitalize on another large federal grant that was coming to this region from the Housing and Urban Development as the Sustainable Regional Planning Grant for the Smart Communities project. You may have heard of the Lane Livability Consortium? That's implementing this project, under which there is a requirement to support the Metropolitan Planning Organization and partner agencies in developing a regional approach to address the legislative requirements, providing public outreach for the scenario planning process, and bringing in other disciplines, including economic development, employment, community health, and an equity analysis. So this isn't traditional land use and transportation planning that we've done here for so many years. So in 2009, the legislative mandate for the five policy bodies of the MPO must collaboratively select a preferred scenario. It will not be done in the traditional land use fashion, and it involves these other areas of economic development, health, and equity. And we hope we can achieve the legislative requirements by forcing, or rather by focusing on the co-benefits of public health, economic development, and equity that will at the same time have achieved the legislative requirement. So rather than making this a focus on meeting the legislative requirement of reducing greenhouse gases here, the elected bodies felt it's better if we can work this in a way that improves public health, improves employment and economic development, and equity, and by the way, happens to also satisfy greenhouse gas restrictions or limitations the Legislature set, that's a much better way to go. So the co-benefits are what's driving this locally, even though it's a legislative mandate applied specifically to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. At first, there was a question of how we would ever get these five policy bodies to agree on a preferred scenario. I mean, you know it's hard enough with three, and now we're making it five.
Did you say which five?
Yes, it would be Eugene Springfield, Lane County, City of Coburg, and Lane Transit District. It's been established and agreed upon that each of the policy bodies can select their own strategies within their community, and that the combination of the various strategies from the five governing bodies will represent a scenario. So it's not like Springfield has to do just like what Eugene's strategies are, or vice versa. You can all have your own set of strategies that will comprise a regional scenario. The scenario is what has to meet the legislative requirements. The first phase of the effort this year is to understand our choices. The base case for this exercise are the years 2005 and 2010. That's the foundation. That illustrates today's conditions. Then, with the GreenStep model provided by the state Oregon Department of Transportation, we will project what the region would look like under the existing policy direction for the reference case years of 2035 and 2050, given the current plans and trends. So we're just projecting where we're heading under the policies that we're operating under today, to 2035 and 2050. And it involves public outreach and engagement to assure consideration of the community's values. This is not a planning exercise on how to get people to stop driving their cars. It's an exercise that will look at transportation and land use issues in the context of community health, livability, economic development, and equity. For example, generally greenhouse gas is not a community value. So having an objective of developing a regulation to limit greenhouse gas-producing activities is not appropriate. Community values, one like, we value the time we spend with our families. I mean, you're getting down to, you know, your emotional level. What is it you really value? Time you spend recreating, having fun in life. Those are real community values. Therefore, investing in development strategies in our community in ways that lessen congestion and commute times would allow more time with your families and for recreational activities, improving community health, and by the way, we may also reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The reason we play out a given scenario is because it's based upon an agreed-upon community value. I should point out that this is a high-level strategic planning effort. It does not look at specific locations, but works on the miles of transit in the region, the amount of multi-use development in the region, the amount of bicycle lanes in the region, and so forth. It's not going to result in specifying implementation strategies for specific projects. So regionally, are we going to be able to meet this legislative mandate and improve the region's public health, improve the region's economic viability, improve the region's equity? As I started out at the beginning, the legislation passed in 2009 with a fixed date to report back to the Legislature with the region's collaboratively selected preferred scenario on February of 2015. So there's our end date. You have to have this completed, and we're reporting back to the 2015 Legislature. Portland got underway in 2010, having only one government body that represents the region. They're about six months to a year ahead of us. We'll benefit from their lessons learned. They develop their base and reference case scenarios before involving stakeholders. So they had to back up and go back and get, at the fundamental level, get their stakeholders informed. Our process, however, took until December just last year to agree amongst the five policy bodies to a contract with ODOT for the first six months of work. So we're behind a little bit here in meeting our 2015 deadline, but we're going to make a royal stab at doing it. Most of the difficulty was in working out how to integrate the Lane Livability Consortium's tasks into the scenario planning effort. It is done, and now we're well on our way. We established an organizational structure. We've been obtaining the input data for the model, and we have developed a public outreach work program that will involve stakeholders in development of mission statement and in development of the base and reference case scenarios. The structure of the scenario planning process is complex. We have a technical advisory committee to provide technical input. That is reviewed then by a project management team, which reports to the CEOs of the five policy bodies, while informing the Metropolitan Policy Committee, MPC. MPC is not a decision-maker in this process. That's been somewhat confusing because the directive from the Legislature funded by ODOT is that this MPO do undertake this scenario planning process. But the legislation specifies that the collaborative selection of a preferred scenario will be done by the elected officials of all the five policy bodies, not by the MPO. A leadership team has been formed of the policy bodies, the mayors and chairs and their CEOs. The first meeting is scheduled for May 29. They'll be responsible for selecting and making the contacts for the stakeholders or community leaders team over the late spring and summer, and we hope to convene them in late summer, early fall, so they can be engaged in the base and reference case scenarios. For the technical advisory committee, because of this non-traditional land use and transportation process, we've decided to form three subcommittees of the technical advisory committee, one for each of the disciplines, health, equity, and economic development. We've convened the Public Health Technical Advisory Committee Subcommittee and are determining the health metrics that we can find research that documents relationships with land use and transportation. We will convene the Equity Subcommittee this month, and then follow with the Economic Development Subcommittee in June. Outcomes of these three subcommittees will be input into the GreenStep model. Again, that's a state model developed by ODOT, has been approved and peer-reviewed, and has a lot of credibility. We're planning on having the base and reference case products ready in September. The second phase of the project, then, is shaping our future, and will be developing alternative land use and transportation scenarios which show a different mix of policy actions and programs that then is currently planned to close the gap between the reference case and the statutory goals by balancing the other objectives deemed important by the region, all based upon our community values. This fall, we will be shaping our choices so that we'll be ready to go next year to involve the general public in developing the preferred scenario and ultimately selecting a preferred scenario by December of 2014. The final phase is to cooperatively select a preferred scenario after reviewing alternative scenarios and combine the desirable strategies into a preferred scenario that is collaboratively selected by the five local governments that takes into consideration public health, economic development, job creation, and ensures social equity, increases transportation choices, and provides affordable housing, and builds a healthy local economy. So as I mentioned earlier, as a final step, we're required to read through the Legislature by February of 15. The findings on implementations of implementing the preferred scenario through amendments to comprehensive plans and land use regulations that would be necessary to implement the preferred scenario, even though we're not required to do the implementation. That's it, in a nutshell. I'd be glad to entertain questions.
We'd like to begin. Rick?
I think I heard you say that the original group of elected officials and CEOs, chairs, are going to actually select a group to do the work?
Well, they're the leadership team that is identified right now by MPC that I propose to take to them, again, it's the mayors and the chairs and the CEOs, and I'm proposing to take to them a request that they develop the composition and the contacts. I want this to be high-end, you know, and important contact to the potential stakeholders that are going to make up the community leaders for this effort.
So at this point, then, there's really not a mechanism in place to figure out who those stakeholders are? Is a list being developed, or will that all be the responsibility of our mayor and our CEO?
Well, we're going to be asking that question at the leadership team that they have on the 29th. Do they want us to provide them with a list? I mean, we can generate that list quite quickly and provide that to them. Or is it folks that they already have in the back of their mind that they're wanting to invite to be specifically on the team?
And I would imagine we're open to suggestions, too.
And we are, yeah.
Oh, you're looking okay. Yeah, I guess there's only one John, okay.
I believe I heard you say something to the effect that in the scenario process that there was an objective not to reduce the use of the automobile. So my question is, if I heard correctly, was this a legislative mandate, that this not be used as a variable in the scenario planning, or was it local?
No. The legislation is a mandate that has a target, that the MPOs in the state must reduce their greenhouse gas production by a certain percentage by the year 2035 and the year 2050. It was felt by the elected officials and policy leaders here that that mandate needed to be seasoned with other reasons to do this effort, for public health, for equity, and for employment and economic development. And so the addition of the work that the Lane Livability Consortium was working under the HUD grant, it broadened that legislative direction out to include these other factors. And that it makes, it takes the top-down legislative mandate that was being put on this MPO as more of an opportunity to do a planning effort in a different way than we've done before. We've got a lot of years of practice of doing traditional land use and transportation planning here. This has an opportunity to broaden it out, to include considerations of public health, equity, and economic development in that. And the community policy leaders felt that's a better way to approach this, otherwise top-down directive from the Legislature on reducing greenhouse gases. The greenhouse gas legislation and limitations are still in the law, and the scenario planning effort, the GreenStep model that we're using from Oregon Department of Transportation, has that as clearly what we're modeling for, trying to show that these various strategies will ultimately reduce greenhouse gas production. But it also provides co-benefits, an analysis of the co-benefits of looking at these other areas. It may be as well-planned as the Springfield area is, after all of these years of planning we've been doing here, that many of the scenarios will have the same result in greenhouse gas reduction. But there'll be co-benefits, and maybe this option will improve public health better than this option. Or maybe this option will improve the economic prosperity of the region more than another one. They all may have the same greenhouse gas reduction, but the co-benefits are where we're going to be able to see what might be a better scenario than another one.
So if what I heard you say in between is that the Legislative felt that if automobile use increased, that would have no effect on public health?
No, I did not say
But they eliminated it, so they must have felt that way.
No, 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 no. The Legislative didn't eliminate anything. The legislative mandate still is a greenhouse reduction mandate, of which we've broadened out our analysis of that to include public health, equity, and economic development. So the co-benefits that we may be able to realize in the Eugene Springfield area, co-benefits being, let's say Scenario A reduces greenhouse gas to meet the limitations, Scenario B also reduces the greenhouse gas to meet the legislative requirements as well. But the difference in A and B is one is better for public health than the other, or one is better for economic development than the other. And so then the community is making a selection based upon, we're meeting the legislative mandate, but also, here's an option that's going to improve public health by 2050 that we prefer.
John, let me try one. I think your question started from the comment that Kent made that was, I think, attempting to say that the project isn't simply aimed at trying to get people out of their vehicles. And you may have read that to mean there was some kind of statement made at the state level in the legislation, or something else that prohibited us from looking at that. Simply, the issue is pretty simple. All that Kent is trying to say is, if the intent of the bill and our efforts were seemingly focused only on that, there was going to be concern that that was going to turn away other efforts or other interests in this project. But there's no prohibition on that at all. In fact, it may be that many of the scenarios we see do reduce reliance on the automobile.
That's what my question was. I read it as he said not to.
Yeah, it's not intended to do that at all. I think Kent's point was it wasn't focused solely on that.
Well, I understand that.
Okay.
Three questions for you. First, on the Health Technical Committee that's formed or forming, has somebody from the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency, Air Pollution Authority, old school, been invited to participate in that?
Yes. Max, I can't think of his last name.
Oh, Heffley?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's on the Subcommittee.
Okay. Second question, can you talk a little bit about how the GreenStep model works and what the inputs and outputs will be?
That's a technical question, and I'm not a technical person. We've got modelers at ElCog that are versed in this, and the Oregon Department of Transportation that developed the model have been working with those modelers and training them. And basically, all kinds of qualifications on this answer here. It will take in, we're going to, the inputs will be what our policies are today around transportation and land use. We'll also be adding inputs from health, equity, and
That's what I was wondering.
Yes, and they are. Now, the model that was given to us from Oregon Department of Transportation is weak on health, economic development, and equity. It's very good on land use and transportation. And we're going to be needing to find where there are relationships that we can document and justify that are in the GreenStep model that will help tease out and address these other three areas. There is, the Oregon Health Authority has some model work that we're looking into that will hopefully work well with GreenStep and help us address the public health co-benefits. Particularly, those relate, and this is good, those related to active transportation modes, getting, you know, bicycling. So that's kind of part, it's well-integrated into the GreenStep model already. Things like, which translates then to obesity, the percent of the population overweight and those kind of things. When it gets to things like other health considerations, pollution, or, you know, other things, we may have a stretch going on in explaining some of that stuff, and it may not be as defensible. But there will be things that through the Oregon Health Authority and their, and the model work that they've developed that will be combining with GreenStep that will be very good, I think. When it comes to equity and economic development, it's not going to be easy, but we're going to do what we can. And it may be that we won't be able to do an incredible quantitative development like I think we're going to be able to with health. It may be more of a qualitative effort that we make on addressing equity and economic development.
Stephanie Jennings was here just recently and filled us in on the Lane Livability Consortium, and just the wealth of data that that aspect of this thing has, that I suppose could be useful in the modeling.
Very much so. We're looking forward to, a lot of the products that come out of the Lane Livability Consortium work will go right into the scenario planning.
And the third and final question is this. As you mentioned, you know, we just got done with Envision Eugene, and we're, out of that, the seven pillars talk about compact growth and transit corridors and higher density along the transit corridors. We've been dealing with walkable neighborhoods for a long, long time. And I guess what I'm trying to figure out, in two and a half years, when the report is due to the Legislature, you're taking a very high-level look at all of this. How are you going to do that, Kent? And try to, I guess where I was originally coming from, we've also done an awful lot of work out on Willamette Street in the vicinity of the 29th, South Willamette. And is it possible to focus on something like that, use that as a model or a prototype that could be applied to West 11th and River Road and wherever else we have these transit corridors identified?
Well, at the end of this process, if the jurisdictions want to pursue some further work, pilot efforts like that, that are more specific in nature, would be real intriguing. But like you said, yeah, this is high-level, it's 50,000-foot, it's regional, and, you know, Eugene has been doing, Envision Eugene, Springfield's been doing its refinement plan, not a lot of cross-fertilization going on there. This is an opportunity to look regionally, including Coburg and the rural areas closely in, you know, the MPO boundary, that includes the rural areas of Lane County that are relatively close to the urban growth boundaries of the two cities. That high-level look is trying to determine, from the regional standpoint, what areas we're going to be able to do in not only meeting the greenhouse gas requirements from this regional standpoint, but what we can do in health, economic development, and equity. And it lends itself from the standpoint of maybe helping the region as a whole know how it's doing, relatively speaking to other MPOs and within the state and nationally and those kind of things. But I think it's going to be informative on how we can, as a, I mean, looking more, almost going back to the Metro Plan days, you know, that may be, don't say that. But it is an aspect of looking at us collectively. And, you know, there's, the importance of diversity, our differences are important. But where there's areas of common that we can build on, this is in that opportunity, I think, to see what we're doing right as a region, and let's build on that and make the region better off in the long run.
I just want to follow up, I guess I have a follow-up question to your notion about the piloting strategies in different areas of town. And as Kent was saying, this scenario planning and what we're mandated to do is much higher level than that. But Kent, at one point, you did mention that the different jurisdictions can choose different strategies to implement the scenario. And so perhaps some of that is Eugene's strategy in order to achieve this scenario. And I'm looking at your, the phasing plan. Where do we, are we required to select strategies, or does that come later?
The first phase I mentioned, too, is the kind of understanding where we are. And then the second phase that we'll be moving into this fall and winter will be And then the second phase that we'll be moving into this fall and winter will be shaping our choices, and that's what that step is. It's kind of, well, that's developing the scenarios. It's the what-if game. What if we did more in this area, or what if we did more in that area? And that results in the modelers doing the predictive work that results in products that show us, well, this is what the region would look like in 2035 or 2050, based upon changing that policy from going that way to maybe over here instead. So that's shaping choices section that'll, or stage or phase that'll occur this fall, winter. And then it's the selection phase that's in 2014, when we really have the public, general public engaged to collaboratively select the preferred scenario, which will be the various strategies of each one of the five policy bodies into one preferred scenario that will meet the legislative requirements, but also be something that the communities support.
If I could just piggyback to a little bit. One of the fundamental things that a lot of the staff talked about as we were developing the scope of work for this early on was the ability to build on all the planning efforts that each jurisdiction had had. So along the lines of what you've talked about in terms of Envision Eugene, the idea is to take that direction, the strategies that are being developed through that process, and be able to see how that plays out in essence, and how that carries out maybe some of the objectives of the scenario planning. So while it won't probably talk at a level such as, you know, a South Willamette type of project, the strategies about corridor planning and looking at intensification along those key transit corridors certainly will. And so on a larger area, perhaps Eugene, I won't speak for the other jurisdictions, looks at that as a key strategy that obviously is a foundation of Envision Eugene, tests some of that through scenario planning as well to see where that takes us. And so it's really building on that, those strategies.
And that's where I see the merit of it, is if you can figure out the metrics and plug into this model, 2035 takes us to the end of the, to the end of the planning period for the Envision Eugene process and say, okay, we densify along these corridors so much, here's what happens in whatever you measure. Then 2050 takes us out 15 years into the next planning period and say, okay, if we continue to go in this direction, here's what happens. Can we do it, or suffer the consequences, or enjoy the benefits, or whatever? Rick?
Yeah, kind of along that discussion line, is there a component in there that actually measures community cost to achieve these? You know me, I keep beating on this concept. If you can build the most wonderful plan in the world, but you can never afford to do any of it, how good is the plan? And, you know, we all know we have footshells full of wonderful, wonderful plans that have accomplished very little, if nothing. Is there that kind of component in this? Because again, if it costs the community so much to do it that they can't afford to, then we never get there. So it'd be, I think sort of your scenario building, to me, needs to have the pros and cons of cost. If you can show your community that to intensify, reduces infrastructure costs and so on, you can achieve this for X tens of millions. But if we do another scenario, it's going to cost us X hundreds of millions, we never get there. And, I mean, part of what I've seen through this planning process, you said we've done a lot of it, is the community on the 50,000-foot level is gung-ho on all the wonderful things we talk about. But when you get it to the ground, go somewhere else and do it. And until we basically suck it up and start to do what we're talking about, all the plans in the world don't get us anywhere. But if you could use the cost and get people to understand what it's going to take, and what you may have to trade off from a personal level to have a more intense environment to live in, or a dense environment to live in, people might all of a sudden say, you know what, I need to rethink my complaint that I don't want you to do it in my backyard. Is that kind of thing going to be done?
Yes. The investment strategies are part of this. For example, it may be that, you know, in tweaking the scenario to attain or meet the legislative requirements for the greenhouse gas reduction that's required for the region may, I'm just, let me pull this out here. May take quadrupling the amount of transit that we have in our policies today. Well, that's a good piece of information to know. Can we afford it? Nope. Are we likely to be able to afford it? Probably not. So it will provide that kind of information that says, this is what it's going to take to meet the standard, or the requirement. So what are other ways that we might be able to get there, even though we don't increase transit by four times, you know, through other mechanisms of land use, controls of mixed use, or, you know, other things? So this is what it's all about. We don't have the answers, we don't know what it's going to be. But it will give us an indication of the investment strategies that we're going to want to make, what it's going to cost to do these kind of things, because they, it correlates right back to, you know, the infrastructure investments and what the community decides to import.
But your example of spending four times as much on transit might be a whole lot less than building, spending 10 times on continually spreading our infrastructure all the way.
That's right, that's right. And that will be part of this analysis that will show that--
So in this analysis, if we do, as an example, what Randy was talking about, the South Willamette Street Plan, and that requires some additional infrastructure upgrades or whatever, those kinds of things will be built in? Are we going to get to that level so that people actually can understand the trade-offs? Because you've got to sell this to the public at some point if we're ever going to get it to buy, people to buy off of it.
I think, again, it's not going to be down to the specifics like what's going on--
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean--
It'll, we'll be able to put in things like, well, we have X number of miles of, X number of miles of transit, you know, rapid bus transit and so forth. That translates to a certain amount of improvement over time with the population growth that we know is coming in, and the way the land use development's occurring and is projected to occur in the future. And we'll see what that, those differences in the model will, I'm not explaining myself well here. The, it will, let me get back to your question, because I was getting off on--
No, I was following, I was doing fine.
It'll answer the questions of strategic investments in infrastructure for the region, but not necessarily for the given municipalities within the region. So it's going to be looking at, again, the miles of this, or the miles of that, the different, you know, mixed, the number, the acres of mixed-use development, the density of residential development, the employment locations of employment centers, and the accessibility of transit, those kind of things.
And will the scenario planning, I'll finish this, will the scenario planning use some of the predictors that we have at Envision Eugene, such as population growth? Or will it get back to really, again, we're trying to get, sort of think, I think, outside the box. My belief is that the population growth estimates in Envision Eugene were way, way, way too low. Now, people want to argue with me about that. But if we really have climate in migration, and we really do grow at paces that we've grown over the last 40 years, our population here could grow substantially. But yet if we follow a lot of whatever our Envision Eugene processes are, we're going to, we're not going to have to deal with those because we're going to shove them outside the MPO boundaries.
And the base and reference cases are going to be taking the best information that has been accumulated amongst the various policy bodies. So Envision Eugene will be plugging in the growth projections that are projected in it. That doesn't mean that that can't be a variable that's played with in the scenarios. But it will be, for the purposes of developing the base and reference case, here's where we're heading, based upon everything, all the policies that are currently being acknowledged as, on the books, even though, you know, Envision Eugene isn't adopted yet, it's the, it's better, I think, than going with the adopted Metro Plan policy that we have. So refinement plan for Springfield, the refinement plan for Eugene, and Coburg will be what the input for the scenario planning model.
Steve, and Jeff, and then John.
I have a couple of questions. One of them is simple, I just wasn't certain on what you, you kept saying CEOs. So I'm trying to determine whether, are we talking about the mayor and the city manager of Eugene, and the mayor and the equivalent in Springfield, and the mayor of Coburg, and then--
The CEO refers--
The CEO of LTD or whatever, whatever they call it. Okay, I just, I wasn't sure if you meant just mayors, or--
The reason, the county administrator's different, and the city administrator's different than the LTD administrator. Rather than trying to go through all that, I just call them CEOs.
But in the case of the county, is it also the board as well, or just the--
It'd be the board chair--
Board chair, and, okay, okay.
And their, or their county administrator.
Okay. And then I have a few, a couple of other questions. You know, traditionally, the way you project things, you just see how the graph went in the past and just continue it out. But you're looking out in the future a long way. I mean, there's a bunch of other trends that are going on. For example, you know, a reduction in household size that continues, is that something you're going to be concluding in your mind? And the same thing with greenhouse gas emissions, we have some new federal requirements that are going to kick in, that are going to reduce the consumption of gasoline per mile, based upon, you know, the standards that are going to be in place for light vehicles. Is that, that would be included as well?
Absolutely. And the new technologies for electric vehicles and hybrids, and all of that's built in, in developing the scenario.
Okay. So that, by itself, that automatically, you know, the federal requirements will have an impact by itself. Have you looked to see if that, does that by itself meet the--
Yeah, I don't know--
Yeah, in other words, I'm just curious of how high or how low that the state, the state could have set the standards that just the current federal changes could get you there, you know, doing what we're doing now, I don't know if that's--
Were you talking about like a baseline case, Steve?
Yeah.
When they, just, I mean, I wasn't part of this, but just briefly, when they first developed kind of what those target numbers were going to be for each of the MPOs, they first looked at all the things that were dealt with kind of more at the state level, which took into account kind of what you're talking about.
Okay.
And factored those in, and when they got down to it, it was like, what's left, basically, now for the local jurisdictions, kind of share of that pie, here's what their obligation is to meet. But they basically subtracted out, there's other reductions that would have occurred kind of more at the state.
Okay, good. And the last thing is the more challenging of the issues, particularly when you talk about health, and when I look at, say, affordable housing, you know, it's a challenge. In other words, are you really providing affordable, or are you trying to minimize the loss of affordable housing? I mean, obviously, you're providing a small, a very small number of subsidized units, but most redevelopment results in a decrease in affordable housing. So is that really what we're really talking about here, rather than provide, just sort of minimize the loss? Or I'm trying to figure out what, how are you going to measure this?
Well, it'll be--
Because even new multifamily, it's more expensive than the older, so--
And it's to be consistent with the comprehensive plans of each of the policy bodies that are involved. So it's to take that forward out 25 and 50, or to 2035 and 2050, to show that the community's trying to attain what it wants to achieve in the way of affordable housing, in its mix of residential housing.
I think it's a good question. And my guess is that the Equity Subcommittee would in part be dealing--
That'd be a big part of that.
--with that discussion, yeah. Hopefully it will.
As we're borrowing from the BEN-AGEND item, but I think we're okay timewise, so--
I'm Jeff. Oh, sorry, okay. Jeff?
Yeah, Kent, thank you again very much. This is a big topic. I've been away for a few weeks, and I'm trying very hard to catch up, so. I guess, one is kind of a broad statement I'd just like to make in terms of what I'm expecting to see from you all over time, and that is, we talked a lot about, a lot about the organizational aspects of this thing, the MPO and lane livability, and the overlap that exists within those organizations with each other, plus the fact that at some point, those organizations that make up the MPO will be able to act individually, at least I think I'm hearing that. So there's a real organizational hash that you're describing, that just gives me nightmares. Okay, so that's kind of where I come from, that's how I make my living, is trying to manage things. And I don't see how you're going to do that, but that's my one comment. The other one is, I guess I'd like you to speak a little bit more about the subcommittees, when they're going to form, and who you expect to be on them, what do you know so far? Because we didn't talk very much about that.
Right. Three subcommittees, one for health, one for equity, one for economic development. The first subcommittee for policy has been formed and has met once and is meeting again next week for the second time. They are comprised of an individual from El Rapa, two folks from Lane County Public Health, one's an epidemiologist. These are technical folks, as opposed to policy people. The subcommittee level is, at the technical level, we're trying to find the data for inputs into these models that can be documented and justified as somehow making a connection with land use and transportation. If it's, if we can't make the connection to land use or transportation, then it really isn't something that will work in the model, because this is, the scenario planning that we're doing has to do with land use and transportation. So that's the Health Subcommittee. Other members are also staff from Eugene and Springfield and Lane County. But the real technical ones are the public health folks and the El Rapa individuals.
Got that.
When it comes to equity and economic development, there, we're going to be taking advice on good technical folks that will also be able to do that same exercise. What in the areas of equity are metrics or connections that we can make that are documented in prior research and works that are making those connections and relationships with land use and transportation? It's going to get harder in equity, and even harder yet, I think, in economic development. But we will be forming those committees, the Equity this month, and Economic Development in June. And if you have advice, recommendations, or whatever, I'm sure the PMT, the Project Management Team folks who are helping assemble these tax-up committees would be all ears to take on any advice you can give us.
I guess I would just offer that, you know, in management, what you see as a key downfall is that people don't do what they know how to do, and they put off what they don't know how to do. And that's what's happening here already. The thing that's your hardest task, you're delaying the start on. And I think that that's a mistake. You need to get going on that. I mean, if you already have the three legs, and the three legs, it sounds like you've got a very good handle on one of them, but the acknowledged two hardest legs, it sounds like you're behind on already. And I think you're, I think you're all, we're all smart enough to know here, you certainly are, that the hardest ones are the ones that you've just identified, they need the earlier start.
I couldn't agree more, but also--
Easy for me to say.
We're learning with this one subcommittee that may be able to be more successful than the other two. We're learning how to get it going, how to ask the questions, how to make the connections, and we're going to, the lessons we learn out of that exercise will then directly apply to hopefully making the Equity and the Economic Development subcommittees more successful. But I hear you, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. Good luck.
John?
Yeah, just very quickly, a general question. You indicated you're working with all these various groups and Envision Eugene and the city that's moving forward, and timing and what's going on is critical. You mentioned that you would consider their inputs. Well, a lot of work has been put in on Envision Eugene, even looking at some of these areas of work growth and that development's going to occur. And you mentioned inputs. Now, I understand that whatever scenarios you come out with, two or whatever, that they may or may not be adopted. But if they are adopted, my question is, is Envision Eugene puts its inputs, how will it be affected by the outputs? Will they alter what Envision Eugene, or could they potentially alter where Envision Eugene is headed?
Again, that would be the result of community buy-in, and if-- Again, that would be the result of community buy-in and if, at the end of 2014, when a collaboratively selected scenario by the elected officials is completed, they would be representing what the larger community felt was the scenario that they wanted. And I would think that because of, again, this not being a traditional land use transportation exercise, we've got these other disciplines that are being added to it, that would be from a grassroots up feeling that we want to adjust the envision Eugene plan or the Springfield refinement plan or the Coburg crossings plan or the TSPs of all these jurisdictions accordingly. Now, it's not mandated, it's not a requirement. It would be whether, it would be your opportunity to say, because of all this work that went on, this is something we'd like to see maybe tweak our policies as well because it takes us to a place we'd rather go as a community at large.
From my perspective, I agree with everything Kent said and I think envision Eugene in many ways does represent a scenario that lowers greenhouse gas emissions and so we're probably headed in the right direction. However, it is a great learning opportunity to test some of those assumptions and tweak, you know, we've always said we want to be an adaptable plan, flexible and adaptable. And so if we learn something, we can change, move in that direction.
One other thing I wanted to say was that, and I meant to say this earlier, this isn't an attempt to undo, redo, duplicate work, hard work that jurisdictions have been undertaking for the last two or three years. This is to take it from there and build on it and see if it can help project out where we're heading in 2050 and if, like I said, if the, if the community decides, instead of heading where we are right now, we really want to adjust the policies to go a little bit more over here, a little bit more over there, this is the opportunity to do that.
Rick?
Well, maybe just one wrap-up question for you, Kent. At the very beginning of your, of your presentation, you talked about this is a value-driven process and you're talking about creating these technical groups. At what, at what point does the public become involved in this?
So the technical groups are getting together now. We don't have a product. We don't want to get the stakeholders involved until we have something to kind of show them. And that ought to be then around September, October, we have our stakeholders together to see what is the base and reference case, where we are now, where we're heading under what we have. Then we're going to develop over the course of the fall and winter with the stakeholders that are going to be wide representation of the community. To, we know where we're at and where we're going, where might we'd rather be and what would it take to go a little bit more in one or the other direction? That's when we'll start developing, I don't know how many possible scenarios. Then in January, February, turn of the new year in 2014, we're going to bring in the general public after the stakeholders have kind of done some initial working of where we might want to go and show that then to the general public and say, here's where we are, here's where we're going, here's some ideas that have been cast out about where we might, could go if we want to, what's your input? And so we, we take all of 2014 to do that, general public information, get their feedback, take it to the electeds and work on the strategies and then final selection in the end of 2014 to report to the legislature in 15.
Final question from Rick.
Somewhere in here, is there, you go through a lot of this work and I think if I understood you, you get the five jurisdictions to sort of come together and say, this is our plan. And the interesting one is that LTD sort of covers the other four, which is a little different than what goes on. Is there going to be some citizen group, community group that gets together and sort of truths this whole thing?
Well, that is what I'm seeing as the stakeholders and...
Maybe I don't understand. When I think of the word stakeholders, somebody that actually has a stake in some process that goes on versus...
Let me broaden it out then to community leaders. And so I, I see folks from United Way, folks from the private development community, from businesses, from the construction industry.
Okay. I understand that now.
Across the spectrum.
Right, okay.
And those are going to be a stakeholder group that are going to fine tune this and be involved this, you know, and start and continue and being involved through trying to help shape it through the fall and winter and then we go to the general public next year.
Okay.
Kent, a seemingly enormous task.
It is.
No better guy to be in it than you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, but...
Our condolences. Amen.
You guys' condolences and it's an evolutionary process. We're taking baby steps at a time and being sensitive to all and trying to get us collaboratively to an endpoint that everybody can see.
Well, we appreciate you being here. I think the planning commission would like to stay plugged into it periodically, so...
I'll, I'll keep in touch with Steve and Carolyn and when you guys want to have an update as we've got something more substantial to report on and be glad to come back.
Have you presented this to other planning commissions yet?
No. Presented it to the Coburg City Council, Springfield City Club and a state transportation mapping geographic information body to map it in the city. That's all so far.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks again. Thanks again.
Thanks.
Okay, on to agenda item three, outstanding issue bin. And for the members of the live and television audiences, just by way of explanation, the planning commission had a retreat here a couple of months ago and among the issues that came up was what to do with both what we hear during the public comment period at our, at our commission meetings and also what to do with some items that are burning on the minds of planning commission members. And so what we elected to do was give every member of the planning commission an opportunity to present those issues to the rest of the planning commission. Couple of weeks ago, we tried to sift through some 10 items and identify which were worthy and not worthy of considering further. We decided they were all at least worthy of further discussion. And so today, what we're going to attempt to do is prioritize those items in anticipation of a June 24th meeting that is strictly dedicated to these bin items, at which time the planning commission will discuss in conjunction with the planning director, which of these may or may not be added to the work program for, for the upcoming months. So that's where we're at. Bill, we volunteered him to, because he's got the architectural hand to make our matrix behind us, and what we'll do now is just proceed through the 10 items and ask the commissioners to give their ranking as we go through. Bill will write them down. I need a couple of volunteers to, to quickly add them up so that we make sure that we've got the right addition going.
He asked me to write, not to add.
Yeah.
I see we actually only have nine on the board.
We're missing J.
Oh, yeah.
We're missing J.
Oh, yeah. I was wondering, because I was a little bit confused as I was going through this. Steve, it really deals with yours. Isn't, isn't your I really a reference to your...
Well, we decided, when we discussed it, we decided to consider it as just a separate chunk of code that was just multifamily was another issue.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep. But I, I is an excerpt from their code.
Okay.
But it's a separate, it's a separate issue because it's designed to implement a simple change.
Do you need an hour or two to reprioritize, Rick?
Nope, just did it.
Who do we have adding up? Who's willing to add up?
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Jeff?
I'll, I'll check.
Looks like Carolyn's due.
Okay. And Carolyn, are you adding up too?
Sure.
Okay. And you have veto power, right?
I just had him add another column for staff.
Okay. Do you want to weigh in as we go through or afterwards?
I'd love to be a part of the discussion as we go through it.
Okay. Right now, we're just going to go through and add the numbers up.
Okay.
See where we're at. Okay? So let's begin with...
So we're using the average versus the total?
Oh, let's use total.
Total's fine, yeah. That'll give us the same result.
Yeah. Which we may get tied.
You're acting right. Don't do the math.
Well, the total and average is going to, it's only...
You've got the same, the same denominator here.
It's just, it's one decimal digit difference, so it's...
It'll be the priorities.
And Bill, I don't know if it's up to you guys, would you rather add it up and just understand what the planning commissioner's vote is and total that and then compare it with that?
I think, I think so.
I think that makes more sense.
So...
It's just like in my business, I'm, I'm designing along and people are remodeling in my book.
Switch the last two columns.
Couldn't have picked a better guy, Bill.
You know, I think as a planning commission, we should have longer discussions about these problems.
We'll be quiet.
You've got an extra bedroom next to that bathroom.
We're trying to get through this by June.
Because you're leaving.
I think it would have been helpful if we had like a five-minute discussion in each one of these to clarify for people so that, you know. It's too late.
I, I, I think initially, we just react to them individually and then we can go through and see how close we are or how far apart we are on these things. So let's begin with A, that's the dwelling unit definition and density in multifamily zones issue. So we'll start with Steve. What's your number?
Two.
Two?
And then Carolyn had that one.
Belcher is four. Yep.
Duncan's ten.
Eight.
Four eight.
Three.
Jeff?
Do we get the...
I figured if it was one of mine, I'd need to...
Yeah. Do we ever talk about these later?
We will later. Yeah. Right now, we're just seeing how it washes out based on our own. So somebody want to add those up?
Forty-six?
Do we get to change our vote after the discussion?
No.
Then will I have the discussion?
Maybe we will. John, maybe we will. Let's just get the numbers up there.
Yeah, let's get the numbers so we make sure...
Bike parking ratios, Steve?
I have five.
John had two?
Seven.
Four?
Oh, one.
You're always before.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were going around the table. Okay.
You got one?
Yeah.
Or B, I have four?
Yeah, I have that.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Item C is the cell tower design and colocation issues.
Three.
Nine.
Six.
Six.
John?
Six. Seven. Sorry. Trying to add and keep track where I'm at here. Eight.
Forty-five.
Hold on, sorry.
Are we good? Carolyn?
Forty-five.
Okay. D is the needed housing issue. Steve?
Six.
John had one?
Five.
Two? Two?
Twenty-five.
E is the zone transition issues. Steve?
Nine.
John had eight?
Eight.
Ten?
Nine.
Sorry, I'm having to look back and forth here. Eight? Fifty-seven, yeah.
F is the PUD modifications issue?
Eight.
John had five?
Four.
Five?
Which one are we doing?
F.
Ten.
Yep.
G is the site and rear yard setbacks in multifamily development. Steve?
Ten.
John had seven?
One.
Nine.
Four.
Ten. H is the amenity bonus options in multifamily development?
Seven.
John had ten?
Two.
Eight?
One?
Yep.
I is the Portland multi-dwelling code?
Four.
Six?
Yeah.
Three.
One?
Three. Three. Yep.
And J, the final one, is the royal node review?
One.
John's was three?
Nine.
Seven?
Two.
Six?
Thirty-two.
Oh, it looks like, Bill, looks like E has a red marker there, does circle?
Put some ranking, get rank...
Maybe you can make one more column and just, and, yeah.
Make that big. So then what?
Forty-eight?
Forty-six is three.
Forty-five would be four. And then thirty-eight, I guess?
Thirty-eight.
Is F?
There's a tie at thirty-two.
Well, we have a thirty-four.
There's a thirty-four, yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-four is next and then there's...
Two sevens.
Two sevens.
Twenty-eight would be one.
So those three, seven, four, ten, one.
Five, two, six, nine, seven. Well, so...
We have a step way in now, is that...
Yes.
Would you, like, I could give you by our points, ten to one, or I could give you, like, as you have in your red numbers?
Yeah, why don't you give us by your ranking?
Okay. So just...
Well, why don't you give us your points and that, you know, that way we'll have it in the...
By your points?
Oh.
Same thing.
Just, yeah, no, I just didn't know. Oh, that's right, because I just didn't know if it was, if you had a bunch of people who had commented.
Well, I, well, we did, but...
So that way you could see if it's, something was forty and something was twenty, you know?
Well, let me give you the ranking to start with and you can just put it down there. So starting at the top, six, two, seven, nine, one, ten, four, five, three, and eight. I might have it down that way.
Have to check to make sure.
Wait, I might be off by one.
Okay.
Our number one...
It's actually was E, yes. Oh, no, that's right. I'm sorry. That's your ranking. I put it backwards.
You can't remember if I is good or bad. No, that's our ranking.
That's our ranking.
That is correct.
So the ranking, the low is best?
Yes.
Oh, we need to flip them then?
No.
No, it's just like our numbers.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
Red against red.
So we have the same number one. So, we have the same number one?
We can give you points too, if you want to see that, but...
Well, it's just helpful, just so we see if there's a big difference or not.
Sure. So, and what, I'll tell you that we had the principal...
Is it the average of how many people voted on this on staff?
It's just total, it's not average.
Or is it, is it a mean?
We had one, two, three, four, six people voting, and so...
Okay, so Matt, high would be sixty.
Wow, that's some...
Everybody agreed, right?
Yeah.
It was in commentary, yeah.
So, thirty-two, fifty-one, thirty-two, fourteen, fifty-four, eleven, thirty-six, 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 and twenty-eight. So, we had to make some judgment calls about the ranking.
Right.
We did, yeah.
Well, it looks to me like it's, it's pretty clear in the top two that E, since both of us had that prioritized top, E... Is zone transitions, okay. And then if you look at G, we ranked it second, and you guys ranked it fourth, which, you know, even if you just add those up, it looks like G comes in se... Oh, okay, and John, that, that's kind of categories, if I was following what you were saying before, the, um... Zone transitions and the site and rear yard setbacks and multifamily development are kind of in the same category, I think. Then after that, we've got a couple of, looks like maybe A and B would fall out next. If you add those up, they hit nine. And A is the dwelling unit definition, and B is the bike parking ratios. So, how many of these do you all want to bite off at a time on the twenty-fourth?
Ten.
I'll also let you know that we did assign a resource level, low, medium, and high.
Oh, okay, yeah, why don't you let us know those?
Can I write them up here?
Yeah.
I'll just do L, M, or R.
With the red?
L, L, M, or R?
Low, medium, and high.
Sorry, I don't know where R came from.
Really hard. Really hard.
Really hard. And by this, now by resource, meaning it would take little, or you give it low?
Low is little resource?
That you're willing to commit, or that would have any commitment?
No, this is all just kind of...
But they see it with the wire.
Oh, okay.
Somehow, whenever we do choose to do this...
Okay.
The, the, the resource would be low.
Can you write a little bit bigger?
L?
Can you tell us what I get?
Okay, low, low, medium, high, medium, medium, low, low, high, high. And these are, you know, just cut at it. And I guess, while I have the floor?
Yeah.
Something that we noticed with some of the proposals is that we may a hundred percent completely agree that the topic is the most important one to pursue, but perhaps in the proposal, a solution was suggested that may or may not be the right solution.
Okay.
And so, I guess what I would say is, in, in, from my perspective, what would be a great way to go about this is to agree what is the, what are the problems we want to address? And then, before jumping to the solution, we kind of do a little best outcome exercise, what are we trying to achieve here? And from there, determine what might be the best solution. And it's just, there's just a couple of them where there was a very specific thing which I might not agree with, but I didn't want to not give the proposal any value because of something that we might tweak. So, that's kind of the perspective we had.
John?
I'm waiting for when you want to...
Go ahead.
Okay, on a discussion, I did miss the last meeting when this was brought up, I just wanted to say a few things, that when I came up with these lists, it was based on my brief history as a planning commissioner, listening to the issues that came up, and also, I'm influenced by the neighborhood and where I live, because I know that better than the other parts of the cities, although I'm learning a lot. The three that I proposed was PUD modifications, transition zones, and needed housing, basically because I live in an area that has a lot of vacant land, and these are issues that are affecting vacant land because there are going to be new developments that are coming in, not infill types of issues and other modifications. And, and also, when you look at Envision Eugene and growth and development and where they're moving into new places, it felt, I felt that these were issues that, that needed to be addressed, because this is what would be happening when you're building new developments or what have you. Second, I wanted to clarify that under needed housing, I was not speaking about changing legislation at the state level on how you define that, et cetera. I was just saying that since, and I saw this as an issue where I lived, when someone says it's needed housing, it precludes neighborhood involvement, that in the needed housing, fast-paced process for application approval, that they put back into it clear and objective standards so that the neighborhood is protected, even though they're not allowed to say something when it's needed housing, not to determine what houses are needed per se. So, with that in mind, that's why I presented these. Secondly, I saw there were other categories in, as an example, the bike parking one. We covered that in the fall, and I thought we did a lot on bike parking that was going to be happening, so that's why I didn't necessarily give it a high vote. Also, a lot of these in Envision Eugene's presentations, I thought were part of the implementation and code revision process, and would be occurring and/or being modified anyway. So, I was trying to put something new in that we have discussed that may not be addressed, and that I see as a timing issue. An example being, where, where I live, I have, in the next twenty-four months, six hundred and seventy-eight units coming in. It would be nice if some of these things were adopted before they're all built, because they're in the process now. I don't know if that'll ever happen, but the point is, is if that's happening in my area and in other areas, by the time these things come about, if it's a long period of time, we could have several thousand units being built, of which, why even have modifications in codes? That's all I wanted to say.
Oh, appreciate that, that's, I forgot that you weren't here last time, John, and I promised that if there were, to be any reconsideration, we would give you an opportunity to get, convince folks to, to do that, so...
Well, instead of a discussion, you can just give me thirty points, and I'll take it.
Distribute it as you see fit, yeah.
Bill?
Well, and I want to jump in too, and kind of to tag on a little bit to maybe what Carolyn said, I know mine were fairly specific as far as what I was recommending, so if mine happened to be some of the ones you're talking about, I'm fine with vetting that. I threw mine out with some specific ideas, primarily just to get a discussion going as the way I saw it. And so, if we come up with a different, you know, way of looking at it, I'm totally fine with that. And then, I think John made a good point, if there are some things, I've, I've kind of heard that the bike parking ratios, which was also one of mine, might also be kind of in the works already, and if there are some of these, I know you've, Carolyn, established the low, medium, and high, maybe are there some of these that are already in process that we just be duplicating efforts on? And if that's the case, then maybe that should affect what we do too, I don't...
That's the only one that I'm aware of, that is...
Bike parking one?
Yeah.
Well, let's just start with this as a point of departure, the, the number one issue is E, and that's the zone transitions. And, and the other one that I think, the way I look at these numbers clearly stands out is G. And that's the side and rear yard setback multifamily development.
Mm-hmm.
E is John Jaworski's, and G is Steve Baker's. And so, fast forward here to June twenty-fourth, what do we do at that meeting? With these topics?
Well, I can provide a little background on, you know, this has been in the Portland Code for quite a while, and it's worked out well, in terms of, so you don't, you know... Again, I could certainly provide a, a little background on the, this code requirement that's been there quite a while. So, you could be introduced to it, it's pretty straightforward.
It's fascinating the way they do that.
Yeah, and it, I mean, just, you know, we have, we have all these special provisions in our code about slope setbacks, and then we change them everywhere else where we go, it's just, you know, it's not, they're not consistent. This was, you know, this in a way does that, in a very simple way, so you don't, you know... You know, from my point of view, if you look at some of the stuff that's being built in, some of it not, you know, some of it's higher quality, but there's some stuff that's being built in the, in the city area that, to be, to put another word to it, you know, we're building future tenements, really. You have five-foot setback, and sometimes you stick in a couple of feet, you know, three foot, you've got a fence between, you've got this narrow yard, you've got four and five bedroom units that unless they're re, you know, reconstructed, you know, are not going to be appropriate, you know, really, for, for the future. And, you know, it's just not a, there's, you know, you have, you have to have windows for light, so you put them in that, in that alleyway, but, you know, you've got a building that's eighty or a hundred feet long.
Well, let me pose the question this way, when staff identifies a problem that ought to be brought up in terms of a code amendment, how do you guys go about determining what the problem is, what a best outcome is, and then how to prepare the solution to it?
We, um... I guess there's not a necessary, some like, there would be something. I should say what we do is we will develop a staff group, and then we'll develop a stakeholder group, and work through those different things, so what is the issue here, what are we trying to do here? And then, kind of going through the brainstorming of identifying potential solutions. And anything to add to that?
Just that we really do try to start with the concepts first, you know, really, what's the issue we're trying to address? And look at just conceptually, different techniques and abilities to deal with that, not writing code at that point, just simply thinking about concepts.
So, John and Steve, and however further else you might want to go with this, what I see as necessary in terms of the twenty-fourth is that the two of you would come with what the problem is, identify for the rest of the commission, here's the problem. I think it would be helpful if you had photographs of these many issues, of what in your opinion works poorly currently, what in your opinion may work well? If you have photos from Portland saying, this is what's happening Eugene, this is what could happen based on what's happening in Portland, I think that's the kind of thing that this group probably needs to know about, in terms of making a case and suggesting an outcome. Now, what we talked about at the retreat, and what you've done up there, Carolyn, how much are the planning commissioners on their own, and how much staff assistance can they count on?
Um, well, we've always talked about this kind of being the planning commission's opportunity to do their work. If there are, if there are statistics or any kind of data that would help make your case, we would be happy to provide that. But I think the, the main thing is, is that the commissioners would be kind of responsible for outlining the content and presenting it. But if, but, yeah, we're happy to help with information requests.
John?
Okay, on, on transition zones, when I presented this, I stated that I didn't see writing anything new. I thought what was done at the University area when they were talking about transition zones and et cetera, one of the things I said at those meetings was that this should be citywide. There's no difference between an R1 and an R4 there, and an R1 and an R4 anywhere else. So, I don't know what new has to be developed, except for the fact that it should be citywide.
And what, what is kind of the reaction to that, Carolyn? What is, what needs to be discussed or overcome? We've talked about doing things on a citywide basis when, when we have adopted certain code amendments that apply to particular parts of town. And some of us have said, why don't we do this citywide? And there was kind of a, well, we haven't evaluated what the impact citywide would be. We know what impact it has here in a neighborhood, but not citywide. So, what, what would John need to kind of develop to bring to the table for that discussion?
One thing to think about is that, that effort in the Western University area and South University was really with the R4 and the R1 in particular, and there's some R3 as well. But we have all the shades of residential zones. I read that transition suggestion to be much more holistic, looking at transitions from any residential zone to another residential zone.
Yeah, that's what I...
So, it's a broader context than we, we applied in Western University.
All it's leaving out is R2, you went R1 to R4, R1 to R3, so R1 to R2, or...
It's not that it's, it's just that it has a more overarching impact citywide, and so, perhaps different circumstances out there could lead us to different answers as well. Maybe a uniform approach out there may not be something that's perfect everywhere across the city, so...
So, you're saying it can't be done, because every area is going to be different?
No, 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 we're not saying that at all, I'm just saying that, that we probably want to be a little more careful about trying to apply a one-size-fits-all approach, and maybe some investigative work about some of the neighborhood areas would be helpful to, to understand some of the circumstances. I'm not saying we have to go through every single neighborhood, but it would be probably a good idea to get some sense of some distinctions that might be...
You know, if I, go ahead, Steve.
If I could throw out a comment on this, because this was developed in, in our area, that, a lot of times, things were applied in our neighborhood. And this is an interesting one, because we've talked a lot about zone transitions, and there is a bigger issue about all the other zone transitions. But I, I construed this sort of as a, as a way of dealing with this specific one that he talked about here, the R1 to R4. And what, you know, in other words, you can broaden the scope of it, but then all of a sudden, we broaden the amount of work involved. Where we could deal with, sort of like, deal with the easy cases?
Yeah.
Deal with the easy cases, and then come back, and if you're going to deal with all the other zone transitions, do them, you know, do them all, don't just... Because you got, you know, R, R1 to G's there, you know, what are all the other conceivable connotations? I remember, I saw a table once that showed all the possible ones that you had, it was pretty...
I think you increased the probability of success by doing that. If, the broader you make this, the more complicated it'll become, just as Steve was describing, so... How do you feel about that, John?
Well, no, I did not, I don't see big issues if there's an R1 and over here is an R2, but when you get, I was thinking mainly about where I've seen it in our areas where you have existing neighborhoods, most of them, at least outside the downtown area, are, are usually R1 or a single-family dwelling units. And what's being put next to them is the issue that I'm bringing up, and now we're, we're getting into density, we're getting into all these issues that the city wants to do. And, and like, where I live, I've seen, you know, three-story things built right next to R1s, that's not good. There should be either a transition or a buffer area, or the stepbacks like they had in the University, all of that would really help. And that's what specifically I was talking about, not looking at every variable transition zone in the city from R1 to R2 versus R2 to R4. I mean, it could get real complicated, I'm looking at protecting the homes that are there, mainly single-family residential, and what's going to be built next to them, because it's really changing their neighborhood.
I'm just trying to figure out how we have that discussion on the twenty-fourth, Rick?
Yeah, I mean, sort of a little bit of history going back, I think, maybe before the two of you were on, is when we talked about sort of the big picture is that we started recognizing that, you know, your neighborhood, Steve, you're talking tens of thousands of square feet, you know, six, seven, eight, ten, twenty thousand. But then we realized, well, what happens if we're talking about a twenty-acre piece, how, how do we do that? And that's where the complication came in. And for me, the reason I voted the way I did is because I think it's a priority, because as part of the Envision Eugene, we're talking about intensifying development on the corridor, and we're talking about residential over commercial, and what does that look like next to, on C2, which right now, you either could build a hundred and twenties feet right next to a single family, there's nothing that stops that. So, mine was, if we're going to intensify, and as the city and Envision Eugene went through, we're sort of calculating, to a certain extent, how much we think we can fit into our corridors, and mine about the transition was, can we really achieve those levels of density? And mine about the transition was, can we really achieve those levels of density on our corridors with some sort of good transitional type zoning? So mine was more of the holistic of, we've got plans and sort of policies we're heading to, but we don't have a way to do it. And I've seen some pieces out there where, we've heard the examples in the news where there were developments planned or wanted to be built and the neighborhood had, was such an uproar that the developer simply went away. And how do we achieve a vision Eugene if we can't, if the developer doesn't have some surety of what you can come in and do along our corridor? So part of my thought was, on the transition stuff, was I was kind of looking at the big picture of getting it done because through the whole envision Eugene process, we've always warned and cautioned at everything else. And, I mean, by our vote up here and by even staff, everybody's for it. So I don't know if we need to discuss what we ought to bring to the table. I don't think we need to bring anything to the table. I think we put it as number one on our work plan or get it into our work plan and start doing the work on it. I mean, I don't think you've got to defend it, it'd be mine. Now, something different is how you want it to come out. You know, you may have a little different idea on your setbacks than I would because again, I'm always concerned about one size fits all, but I don't have enough experience working with Portland code and stuff to know that, so.
That's about as close to unanimous as you can get.
Yeah.
To vote for an element. I mean, I know we're talking about how to proceed, but.
I, I do think that we all probably have a little bit different idea of what transitions needs. And so, months ago, I was all about, it's just about the corridors. It's about how we transition from the corridor to the neighborhood. But I, after talking to some of you, I've come around to say, no, it's existing zoning where we have existing zones that, you know, are different, abutting each other. And so I do think that we need to define what we're talking about addressing. We need to talk about what we're trying to achieve with it. And then from my perspective, what would be useful because remember, our current work plan is full. So this is about what goes on the next work plan. But in the meantime, are there tasks that planning commissioners can be doing to help set us up for this future work plan item? And so if an outcome of the June 24th discussion is, we all agree what the problem is, we all agree where we're trying to go, and here's some next steps that individuals can take to make that happen.
So let me just offer this. Again, it seems to me that what John and Steve were talking about are very related.
No.
No, I think, to me, side and rear yard was part of, I'm not pushing my own thing, but PUD modifications. When we have problems with PUD modifications, lots of times they're on the side and rear setbacks. They want them altered and changed and redefined and all of a sudden the project and for that zone is not what it was thought by the people there.
I don't think, I mean, there's a relationship, but I don't really think, I think it's really about what you really want to have in the future. And do you really want to have, you know, six to 10 feet between large expansive walls and where there's windows and, that's windows and light and air and, you know, you know, it's just, so when you have large wall areas, you have more separation, which is what Portland requires. So that there is more light and air, particularly when you're talking about a four-story building, which is what, you know, we're looking at now, you know, in the R4 to, well, four to six, so.
John, what, what would you suggest? You're, you've got the number one topic. How would you like to present this on the 24th?
I like the, the way that Carolyn said to approach this, since it's one of their priorities too, let's get into the defining of what we want to do and move from, from that position. I can bring in some pictures to show you what was on my mind, but I don't think it covers everything that Commissioner Duncan and them were bringing, that I, I think it should be looked at, as Carolyn suggested, from a citywide perspective and how do we proceed on this.
So what is the interface between a commission member lead and staff on something like this, Carolyn?
I would, what I might recommend is that actually not just one person from the planning commission put it together. There could, you guys could form teams. And I guess the way I've always conceived this, of this, is that we are being responsive to requests.
Requests, okay.
But, you know, if we can help get the ball rolling in the right direction, we're happy to.
Steve?
Well, another way to approach this, John's particular one, is think of it as actually two prongs. One is some code we've already written and vetted, you know, we went through, unless we have problems with it, between R1 and R4, you could apply that now. And then the other prong of this one is the more, that's why I thought was zone, you had it down as medium. In other words, then we deal with the other issue that we keep talking about, the transitions, which, you know, are, the classic one is between our, our, our trans, you know, our, the zones that we're intensifying and then residential area that might be behind. And, you know, traditionally it might have been zone two, but it's all one-story residential here and it was all one-story. It's like Willamette Street, yeah, well, it's zone C2, but most of the retail is all one-story, so it's not really a problem. Comes a different beast if it's six-story. So, and which we, the other thing is we traditionally haven't had any higher buildings. But, you know, we talked with a developer that's coming in who's not, not doing with MPT and it's one of the best developments I've seen, and it's got design, I won't comment, but it actually was designed by architects and landscape architects. It's replacing a, a medical building, a medical office building in like 12th and Patterson. But it's six stories. So that, I mean, that's the, you know, where do you?
But again, now, for the 24th guys, we've got two months to get there. What are we going to bring to that meeting and hope to get out of it?
Well, I, I agree with some of what Commissioner Baker has said. I, I think we've pretty much done some code between R1 and R4, which might be applicable everywhere between R1s and R4. Hopefully we've learned some things on the envision in South Willamette because there must be zone transitions there when they have these cottage homes and other homes existing between what's being built. So someone's already thought about those transition zones. And maybe on, on the 24th, as Commissioner Duncan has said, we can take a look at those others and maybe just lay out what is the height and limitations and setbacks between them as they are now and say, where are the gaps and where should we move forward on some of these?
The way I look at it is whoever presented the issue needs to take a lead on it. Organize a team, if that's what you want to do, or fly solo. Get what you can from staff. Put together some kind of a paper that we can, the rest of us can have ahead of time outlining, outlining what the issues are that we need to be looking at. And if we can follow Carolyn's suggestion of what the good outcomes would be, and then maybe some suggested solutions, just to get things started.
For the 24th of June?
Of June.
I would just modify to add, and potential next steps?
Mm-hmm, sure. Okay. And then that gets us back to in terms of how many of these to tackle. And again, what, what I just did was I added, like on E, our priority with Carolyn's priority and that's obviously floats to the top. And that's John Jaworski's. The second one that floats to the top is G, which is Steve's. And then the next two add up to nine, that would be A and B, and both of those are Bill's. And then the next two that add up to 11, just the way they are, are John Belcher's C and Steve Baker's H. John?
Yeah, I, I wish John Belcher was here. I tried, I tried to reach him. The issue on cell towers, I have a, I actually excluded myself from the meeting because I have a lot of interest in cell towers and, and co-location and stealth design. But the issue that I, that I, that I see there is, when I was thinking about it, I was trying to say to myself, well, how many more cell towers are we going to be see coming into Eugene if there are already so many that exist now? And how big an issue is this for the future? You know, because we already know of a lot of cell towers that are out there that have co-location capabilities, that, you know, even if they were with, let's say, friendly and they can get to be friendly providers of the service. So for the most part, I didn't see that there would be that many more coming. And with the issue of the last one, definitely they wouldn't be trying easily to put them in another R1 zone again.
Well, there's some of that.
Yes.
You say the location is dictated by proximity to other locations, not the difficulty of putting them one place.
Yeah, I know, but they're, but, but by now, most of the service areas, most of, most of the service areas should be covered by somebody.
John, but it rose, it rose to be in the fourth priority out of?
I understand. I'm just saying though, that, that I just.
Now, out of, out of respect to the group vote, we need to let John make his case.
Yep. That's, that was a fifth priority, right? Or is it a fourth?
It's tied for four.
Tied?
No, tied for fifth, yeah.
Six.
Okay.
And so are we all agreed that that's how, do you think we can knock off six? Shall we prepare to handle six at that meeting?
Two hours?
Two hours.
Probably surprised we get through training.
Yeah, I was just going to say two is probably more likely. I think you might have to schedule it more like, what do we have, two in the first group and how many in the next group? Four more? Yeah, that seems a little, I mean, I think the goal would be to try to cover the two.
Okay.
And if we had some preparations on the others, so if it turns out we able to move forward, we could go, but I, I think it'd be unrealistic to think you're going to.
I can be prepared on the, on the third one. And then we can, if we get to it, great, and if not, that's fine.
I'm looking for volunteers to be on whatever team.
I'm not helping anyway. Mine was one of the failures.
You're not helping or? You had really good ideas. You had good ideas.
Are we okay with that then, on the 24th, we pick off John's and Steve's with Bill on deck?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Bill's are both A and B?
Yeah. His choice of which one to bring forward first. Well, no. The A, A comes first. We said A first.
Well, they'd be at the same number.
Well, because Carolyn put a six.
Case word higher than B.
I see.
Well, you can duke it out with Carolyn, which one you want to?
Well, there's some discussion about whether B is already.
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah. Sure.
Fair enough, guys. I'll put this out in an email so that everybody is crystal clear.
It also would be useful to have the whole table too, so we know. Picture.
Yeah.
Everybody's grabbing their big cameras.
And I'll tell you, if we're successful with this, then we'll tackle scenario planning the first of July.
That's nice for you to say, you're God.
July 1st, right, Randy?
I was surprised you didn't suggest on June 24th, we handle all 10.
You did. I was not pushing that.
So have we, speaking of which?
So will you guys share that? Did it turn out okay?
Not, not yet, but I'll get one.
So for June 24th, will, would you like to have materials available ahead of time?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's essential, yeah.
So then we need to be, we need to be getting our stuff out by when?
Yeah, when, when do John and Steve and Bill?
A week before.
Well, Carolyn, when?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you can turn it around pretty quickly once we have it. So if we have it Tuesday or Wednesday, or the next meeting?
Before what next meeting?
June 24th.
The June 24th meeting?
Tuesday or Wednesday?
About a week or a little less.
So we're somewhere around the 17th, okay.
Okay. Any other final comments about that? That was easy.
He grins a lot, doesn't he? Everything's easy to him now.
Okay, comments from staff and commission. Carolyn and Steve, what do you have for us?
Nothing.
Anything else from the members of the commission? Jeff?
I won't be here on the 24th.
Aww.
June?
June.
Would you like us to postpone the meeting a week?
Uh, I'm not trying to dodge it, honest, Randy, yeah, that'd be great if you could.
Would you like the vice chair to punch the chair?
Anything else?
He's pretty cute over here, isn't he? He's rubbing it hard.
Been there the last few weeks here.
Anything else, gentlemen? This meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I do. First, I'd like to have a motion that we don't accept Randy's resignation in four seasons. There you go. I withdraw. I actually went to the lane livability meeting last Monday, I saw you kind of.
Right, I dropped it, yep.
I thought it was a real interesting meeting in that it, it was suggesting some very interesting ways for agencies to work together, which I'll admit was almost a little surprising to me that I didn't, that the agencies weren't already doing all of that until I sat and listened a little bit more. And one of the things I recommended, and it has to do with sort of having different organizations work together with common ideas as far as data availability and what the data is out there and sort of how you deal with the equity questions and so on. And understanding that when you do, as an example, let's say land use around locating LTD buses on, say an MX line, what should you be paying attention to when you do that? One of the things was brought up was the economics or, you know, cultural differences and so on and so forth. And I thought it was real interesting, it almost like I said, surprised me that that wasn't already in play some. But it kind of, one of the comments I made that I noted was, the amount of different agencies that we have present to us over the years, and maybe it's because I've been here so long, but it's like different organizations, agencies, departments, whatever, will show up with data that they have developed, which I see that data already have been developed by somebody else, but the sharing didn't seem to be going. And I'm going to suggest, to a certain extent, that's what Lane Livability is trying to promote, is more sharing of that information and not only understanding, but sharing what's out there. And I made the recommendation that on some sort of active website that people, as they do this, could all share in and say, I've got this information, don't go out and rebuild the wheel type thing, or we've developed a way to really use it appropriately, whatever that information might be. Come to us and we'll help you learn. You don't have to go out and learn it again. And I kind of get in the idea that that's really where a lot of this is heading. There is an actual, an organization in private, Stephanie, that actually has computerized a lot of what I saw coming out of this, but at a much higher level. And it's a subscription service that can be bought and data can just, it's, it's amazing what this company's doing, manipulating information and bringing it out in ways that are, people can really read and understand and stuff.
Yeah, I just want to follow up a little bit of the discussion we had while Kent was here. And the economic part of it, which I always feel is the last thing developed and the most lightly resourced and it's very much dependent upon the participation of friendly technical advisory group participants. And I'm wondering, one of the things I haven't seen, we've seen the university weigh in on a number of different topics with studies and grad, and graduate students and undergrads, and I'm wondering if there's a, if it has been done before, there's a possibility of, of getting some business, some aspect of the business school or the econ, the school of economics involved in helping us deal with economic development. Has anybody talked about that before? I'm just curious.
I don't know if that has been talked about at the scenario planning level. We'll certainly pass along that suggestion. Regarding other academic research that's happening at the university and our economic development team that we have here at the city, I can't speak to what that relationship is, but it's a good question.
That's a good point because, you know, the school of architecture and landscape architecture, they use Eugene as a.
We tap into those.
All the time.
All the time, yeah.
So it seems like there's another possibility to, another, another area of study for them.
Right. There's a very clear connection between kind of some of that economic activity that is being generated from the university and some of those small startups.
Right.
But you're talking more about the academic research side.
Well, I'm talking more about the issues of the. Well, I'm talking more about the issues of the, understanding the broader economic, the relationship between the.
Metrics, yeah.
I'm speaking very broadly here about economics and economic development for the area.
Yeah, what, it's the basis, it's the basis for us achieving best, basically.
Not just.
Everything else.
Right, not just university spinoffs, not just.
Right. Get people good, good employment, affordability becomes a better issue.
There you go.
Question.
So it'd be nice to get another, it'd be nice to get another resource involved here that would have credibility around a table, a diverse table. And I think the university might be that party.
Might start with Tom Azdoba. He's the head of the Center for Sustainable Business Practices in the Lundquist School.
Yeah, I was actually going to talk, mention briefly Historic Review Board, but first I wanted to appreciate a comment that Jeff made when, when the scenario planning was here, because I think we also replicate the same problem, and that is, we deal with the hard things last in our planning efforts. And you're right, you know, those hard things, we really need to deal with, we need to get them started earlier because they're going to take more time, they're going to be more difficult. But we have a tendency to do the easy stuff first in a lot of our activities. So it'd be good to think about that when we're laying out, you know, our, our work plan, yeah. Just, anyway, I just wanted to comment, the Historic Review Board, we had a, they sponsored an open house at an old.
Church.
Church, yeah, I went to it this weekend. I'm glad I was because it was only two of us, were only two of us who were able to make it. It's an old church that's been moved, we think, twice now. It's like from 1980, 1853.
Third time's the charm.
Well, you know, it's, it's really interesting, just from a, from a perspective, I've been here since early 70s and, you know, we had a lot more interest in historic preservation in the past than we do now. So here's a church, the, and fortunately, I think we may have found a, a compromise, they, they don't want to be responsible for it anymore. They built a new church next to it, you know, much larger and pretty boring, you know, you know, one-story butler kind of building. You know, pardon? Yeah. So, but anyway, there is this nice older, and it's still well-maintained, you know, it's well-constructed and well-maintained. So the, the hope is that the Santa Clara, I always get confused, neighborhood organization, there were a couple members from that, Jerry Finnegan, who I talked to, and a couple of other members. And it looks like there might be a way that, that the congregation, there's a part of the congregation that's older, you know, that, and they just don't want to maintain, have to maintain the building anymore and they're worried about vandalism and so forth, which really hasn't been a problem. But they're actually willing to let it stay there maybe now. And then the Santa Clara organization would have to form a nonprofit to assume, you know, responsibility for the operation and maintenance of the building. I mean, the ideal thing would be to move it onto a park, but the quotes from the movers was just even touching the building is like $25,000, $30,000, and that's before you move it an inch. So, and, you know, to move it any distance, you know, fortunately, it's on Irvington Drive, which is sort of in the, in, in urban, you know, in the, within our boundary, urban growth boundary. But, you know, wherever you move it would be a substantial move and it's very expensive to get the power lines lifted up and, you know, you don't have to cut the building in half, it's kind of tall. So, so anyway, that's, that was, that was positive and hopefully that will work out and it will be safe. But it's a shame, here's one of the oldest buildings left in Eugene and we can't find a, a place for it.
Would part of that relationship be that then the neighborhood could use it?
Yeah, the neighborhood would take over responsibility and would use it, and then they, they could use it for meetings and other groups in that area could meet. The other thing that was interesting, I'll just pass it on as an aside, there's some interesting fellow who's done a lot of volunteer work, there's an old cemetery that's not in the urban, not in the urban growth boundary, just a little farther out, called the Lupre Cemetery. And they're having some kind of open house over the end of the month on the three-day weekend. But it's one of the oldest cemeteries in, in this part of the valley and it's got all these old names. And there's this one guy who's volunteered, he's put together this giant notebook of, he's cataloged every stone and he's found all the pictures from the, you know, it's pretty amazing. So it was, he was there and it was, it was interesting, but it's just unfortunate. There weren't many people that were interested in historic stuff, you know.
Anything else? We're adjourned.